We've had the changes in the district since then. And through that all, his calm demeanor and his wise counsel has served us incredibly well. A couple of things I want to highlight when it comes to Larry. One of the things that I've always appreciated is that regardless of the circumstances, his calm and cruel demeanor and his communication skills that he brings to the table always serves us well and always helps us to get to a resolution. We've worked with a number of attorneys that are super smart. And then we've worked with some attorneys that are really good doctors. And then we have Larry who's both. So... The other thing is, I always put it to Larry, there's two people that I always talk about in our district and that I just appreciate their wise counsel almost regardless of the situation. And Larry is definitely in that category. The wisdom that he brings and the judgment that he exercises from situation to situation always causes us to pause and think, always nudges us in the right direction. Oftentimes when we call Larry, we are behind the eight ball and we should have called him sooner. So his ability to research things quickly and to get to the core of the issue has really been beneficial for us as well. He prepares in just an amazing, comprehensive manner and it always serves the district really well. His people skills are A+. He is able to take situations and break them down into little bite-sized chunks so that those of us who don't work in the law every day can understand the issue and can apply the advice that he is giving us. One of the two more things I would say about Larry is perseverance, his ability to stick with an issue until we get to resolution and to hang in there. And to hang in there in a problem-solving mode is absolutely amazing. And that has served us well for years and years. The other thing about Larry is that he's a creative solution seeker. He is not someone that's going to stay in the box. He is willing to step outside that box and find solutions that are super creative for us. I mentioned Larry's calm manner and his... oftentimes when Larry's called in, it's very... we've got people that are very passionate about issues by that point. And he remains calm all the time. And, well, until he isn't. And then he does this... Then he gets this little half-smile on his face and you can see him kind of lean forward and you know it's on at that point. And he's just been an incredible pleasure to work with. And we just wanted to take this opportunity and thank him publicly for all the service that he's provided to the district and the hundreds of thousands of students that have come through this district during his time with us. So Larry, we wanted... we thought about getting you a fancy watch, but times are hard, so we got you this certificate. Come on up and maybe take a picture.
I'm not sure you're talking about the same guy. Thank you very much. It's really an honor to be here tonight and it's been an honor to represent the district for a long time, to say the least. 1973, when I came here, I came out of the military after serving in the military for about six years in the lawyer. The city of Hillsborough was all of about 14,000 people. It had very narrow boundaries and that sort of thing. Over the years since then, the last of the great land grabs occurred when the city limits of the city of Hillsborough moved east all the way through Tannishbourne, when it was much closer here at the time. But the school district itself, it consisted of two school districts actually. There was an elementary school district at the time and also a high school district that later unified and you have what you have today. But at that time, it was an interesting combination of superintendents that you probably ought to look back in the archives and see how things went. But Bill Schwenn, who was the fellow that I joined, who had been doing the school district work at that time, represented both of them. So he was always challenged, to say the least, about who was doing what to who and all that sort of business. So it was a very interesting experience, to say the least. I was going to tell some more stories about mine, but he encouraged me not to do that. But I will tell you one, and it has to do with the first major construction project that the district had on my watch, so to speak. That was Glencoe High School in 1980. And I can say to you that in 1980, we really... we had things to learn about contractors and part of the works and how it was all being managed and that sort of thing. We learned some lessons from that that actually have never been repeated. And I can say to you that at one day, I was standing in the major hallway at Glencoe High School and it was raining on the inside. We were in trouble, to say the least. But since then, as you already know, I'm sure there's a strategy going on about construction management and that sort of thing. We have avoided, you have avoided litigation of any kind since then, dealing with the various building projects that you've had. Thankfully, you've got another opportunity to build more schools and do all kinds of grand things here in Hillsborough. So this is really an honor to me and I thank you very much for saying the kind words that you did. I'll be seeing you around because I'm still standing and I'm healthy and I'm going to stay that way for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Larry, and thank you very much for coming, Scott. We are going to move on with our agenda for the evening, which means for item C, and I need a motion to approve our agenda. I am sure that we approve the agenda. It's second. It has been moved by Eric and seconded by Yedira that we approve our agenda as printed. If you would like to approve our agenda as printed, as moved by Eric and seconded by Yedira, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Our agenda is approved. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item D, audience time. We do have one audience request intent to speak card, which you can find on the back table there if you would like to speak. And you can submit it to Board Secretary Val Bakma. And Dani, I will invite you up, but I do have to read a statement first so you know when I move at a snail's pace. And here we go. Public participation in board meetings is governed by policy DDH. Visitors who wish to speak before the board must complete an intent to speak card available on the back table and provide it to the board secretary. Comments concerning the published agenda item are limited to its designated place on the agenda unless otherwise authorized by the board. Comments about non-agenda items will be heard during audience time at the beginning of the regular session. Speakers should state their name and, if speaking for an organization, the name of the organization. A spokesperson should be designated to represent a group with a common purpose. Three minutes will be allowed for an individual speaker. Five minutes will be allowed for a visitor who is speaking on behalf of a group. Speakers may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but in public sessions, the board will not hear comments regarding any individual district staff member. Commendations involving staff members should be sent to the superintendent. Channels for the board's review of legitimate complaints involving individuals include board policy KL, public complaints. If appropriate, the board chair will connect the visitor with an administrator to receive comments regarding personnel. Any hearing conducted before the board regarding personnel shall take place in an executive session. The board thanks all visitors for their presence and appreciates the input of community members. All right. So if you would introduce yourself, Dani, and I believe you... you don't say address anymore, so it doesn't matter that you're a minor. So just introduce yourself and I'll start your three minutes.
All right. Hi, everyone. I'm Dani Adama and I'm a sophomore student at Big Picture High School. And I'm here today to talk to you guys about an opportunity to help support our students. And I just want to say thank you to everyone who showed up to the rally for our students down in Salem a little bit ago. Your support really meant a lot to us. And I just wanted to say that tomorrow night from 4:00 to 8:00, from 4:00 to 6:00, on five different bridges across Highway 26, you can sign... you can come to drop banners over to talk about the support and the need for education and funding. You can sign up at a bit.ly link. It's a bit.ly/washcobannerdrop. It'll just help us get a number and also tell you where to go. It's really important that we keep advocating, especially down in Salem, for the education and for the funding we need. As a lot of you guys know, there was a bill that was recently passed that didn't quite give us the amount of funding that we'd really like for to really help us get where we need to go. And it's just important that we continue this and just keep standing up for our students. I know how much you guys care about our students. Thank you.
Let me do add more titles. I did not receive any other intent to speak cards, have you? Okay, we will move on with our agenda here. And that brings us to the reports and discussion portion of our agenda. So we would love to welcome Monty Akers and Kristi Kocke up and share with us a little bit about the Team Up data that you have.
What's your...
Okay.
Hi. I was here last month, but I'm Kristi Kocke and I'm one of the parts of the Team Up crew. We were really excited to talk to you tonight about some of the growth that we've had and some of the ways that we think this program can grow. I think what's exciting to me is that we've shown that there are still ways in our system that we can be creative and within the system and within our budget, we can serve kids who are still falling through the cracks. We've got tons of interventions in our system already that work for some kids. We have grad coaches, we have new wellness centers, we have hair teams, we have Latino liaisons, we have attendance people who make calls home. There's lots of things we do. But at the end of the day, after all those that exist, elementary programs that we have, on-track reports that we run, that we look at all the time, at the end of the day and each year, at the end of the year, there is still a group of kids that we cannot figure out how to help. That's true in every school in our district. So despite those interventions, we think there's more we can do. More, not instead of, but in addition to. This is one of the most important things that we put together because I think visually it's a really good representation of what has happened this year with our group. We don't love using grade point as an indicator of success. That's not even really our first go-to. But when we did, as... we were just curious to see because we didn't spend any time, no study hall, no... these were kids that, oh, we need to put them in stuff. We didn't do any study hall, no teamwork. Really, all we did is help them calculate their grades. And when we went to see how they were doing, we were really surprised, to be honest, and it was great. And then what we did is the group on the left is actually the group that was also recommended by the elementary teachers, but we couldn't take this year because of where the schedule fits and when they have to have certain classes. So we decided to pull those kids and compare. And what we saw there was a pretty clear indication that with a program like this embedded in the school day and pretty much very close to an existing budget, our kids were not only just surviving, but they were starting to thrive. But our kids are not even close. This is... this looks great, it's green. But as of this morning, 50% of our kids still say they cannot ask a question in class. They do not feel comfortable asking questions. We've got a couple of kids in the red who identify growth in themselves, but the skills that they need and the situations they have at their home life let us know that we needed to get them way earlier with something different. We've been aware of those kids from the get-go, but can we provide something earlier that specifically addresses the needs of those kids? We think we can. So this was great. We had three schools of elementary teachers give us names, just like that. I think we have 26. Grant, you have 26?
25.
25 elementary schools. We asked three of them for names. We had 40 names. 40 names despite the interventions and all the great things we do that teachers said, we know these kids are going to need something. So this was a result of a lot of people that said yes at the right time. Monty Akers and who is here, and Michael Moore at Murray, who are out of the country. But Casey is here representing from the Hops today. They have been on board since we started the board lawyers. They jumped in and said, what can we do to help? They said yes. And then aftermath lawyers, we knew we needed something a little more extensive and we needed to move a little sooner for those kids. So we needed a principal that would be willing to take a bigger leap and take a risk and let us pretty much go into a school and try something bigger, and that was OJ. So OJ said yes. Then we needed someone who would advise us on math. Who can possibly tell us what we need to do to get these kids where they need to be with math? And I think everybody in this room would agree, it's that woman in blue, Kelly Peeter. So Kelly, but what Kelly did is not only sign on to help give us ideas of what we could do with math, she came into the classroom side-by-side, worked with not only our math department in the school, our kids would go to a different math teacher, but she taught us how to teach math. I mean, Kathy and I actually are creating our own math lessons and doing a pretty darn good job at it. And it's really exciting. And so what her role in this whole project was to tie all of these pieces together, make our whole system stronger. So that was super fun. And then there's Kathy Graham. Kathy Graham, who quietly, for 29 years, has been creating her own cutting-edge technology curriculum. She's taught lots of different electives, lots of different course subjects, even by accident. And when I said, hey, do you want to come and work every night with me and create brand-new science math integrated lessons and by the way, also do a full-blown wrestling program? She was like, no, but okay, yes, I'll do it. Way outside of her comfort zone, but she signed on because she's seen the need. She knew there was a potential there, a possibility. So we had this little core group. Then Janice. Janice was an interesting addition because I didn't really know Janice. I only had seen her on Twitter. And everything she tweets out and likes, I was like, I like this woman. So I literally messaged her on Twitter and said, I know you don't know me, but can you come talk to me about elementary schools? Because I don't know what's going on in elementary, but we do know we need to work sooner. So at this point now, we're looking at what would that look theater-wide? And can Janice give some feedback to us about, is this doable, these ideas we have? So that was very helpful, part of the team. Who am I missing? Travis. Travis was a super small, but very important person.
Super small.
Very significant. It was literally a five-minute yes, but it was on the heels. It was on the heels and this is also important. I have a couple no's. And we heard a lot of no's along the way. No, we're not sure. No, you're not following protocol. No, we need this form, but we don't have this form, but we need you to do that. And I was like, what? And so Travis, I said, but could we do this little thing because it's key? We need this to happen, even though I know it doesn't work with all of our rules in the system. And he was like, yeah, okay, that makes sense. We can do that. It's not going to hurt anybody. It's good for kids. Let's do it. And on that day, Kathy remembers that day, I almost like cried with joy because to be able to work in a big system like this and have people finally see that what you're trying to do, even if it doesn't follow the rules and even if it's going to make people uncomfortable, is important and super validating. And then we come to the queen of yes. She is right there at Dale's yes. But it's Dale Spitzer. Dale does not say yes to all of our yeses because we're still working on mobile lab ideas. She said, no, that's crazy, that's too crazy. I present ideas to Dale about what we can do for kids. If it's something that we need and we don't have, if it's something that we can do that will teach the district things, even if it's not successful, and especially if it's something that can work in the system, that maybe can work in the system, she says, go try it, even if it might not work. So she's also been a part of the teaching team a long, long time ago, and so she's seen elements of what we're trying to do and so she kind of knew where we were going with it. So she was the final yes to the picture. So we had this giant team, community people, admin people, teachers, and then, and just if they all kind of came together, it was like the clouds open, let's go. And it was awesome. So we started. Now, three years ago, we started with Math Warriors. So it was just Mike and Monty and I, Kelly. And we like snuck into Glencoe in the dark of the morning, literally in the dark, like at 6:00 AM, because again, Dale said yes, let's try it. And we took a group of boys that we knew from Evergreen that never had an intervention like this. So they went all the way through Evergreen in the red. Good, no matter what we tried, and we tried all these different things. So we said, well, okay, as freshmen, what can we possibly do for freshmen that could move them farther and quicker than what we already have that's existing? So we attached the grad coach, Lauren Cooley, who was amazing. Monty was there with breakfast with the optimist. Jason Harless, the math and wrestling coach, math teacher, agreed to have him in his class so we could build a relationship. I mean, we met once a week and it was not enough. It was a great program, still going strong because of Monty, really because of Monty. And those boys will tell you, it is going to be one of the defining programs, defining memories that they have. Still, they had some growth, but we did not even get them close to where they need to be to thrive. So we're not talking about just getting them across the finish line with D's so they can graduate, we're talking about can we bring kids to this level? First of all, can those kids even get to those levels? Yes, they can. So then we thought, said, okay, we need to have that be daily. They needed daily. Weekly was okay. They needed daily intervention or, you know, some kind of a class that would support them daily within the system with all of the same elements. So then we thought about Abbott. Kathy and I, many people in here don't know, but Kathy and I actually taught the very first Abbott class in this district. It was at Evergreen. We had all the Abbott materials. She went to the conference. And our kids graduated, our first class of Abbott kids graduated, and they would come back and say, that Abbott class in particular was more powerful and had more impact on their lives than anything they had done since. But here's the really interesting thing. We actually really didn't do most of the Abbott curriculum during that Abbott class. What we did is borrow the elements of the Abbott system, which allowed us a daily contact with the kids, the tutorial math aspect. We borrowed some pieces of it, but we created each day for those kids what they needed at that time. Lot of work, really personalized, but it was rigorous and it worked for them. So we saw that that worked. We saw it. We did it. Super exciting. And our district supports Abbott in all of our schools. It's really important for kids. There's no questions that kids will also tell you, that's a difference maker for them. We support a district TOSA for Abbott. We pay for Abbott coordinators, building principals, put money aside in their budget for Abbott. We do a lot of great things for kids in Abbott. And those are the kids that are kind of in the middle. They have okay attendance. They've shown some motivation. They've gotten some good grades. And I'm looking around and I'm saying, at this point in time, what is there for my kids? What's there for my Math Warriors boys? Because they can't get into Abbott. They don't qualify. Or they try to get in, but they miss the marker. Okay, so what else is there if they don't get into that program? Our kids here, some of them applied for Abbott and didn't get in. Half of our kids were never considered for Abbott. What is there for them? So we're saying in our district, we value that Abbott class, which is valuable. We value it. And we are saying to kids, we know you need a daily time with a teacher that cares in order to get to college. We know that you need someone that knows you and we're going to give you that space in your schedule and we're going to fund it. What does that say to a 12 or 13-year-old that doesn't have access to that program? Whose friend is getting recruited for Abbott, but they never get asked because their attendance is too low? What is the message? I was super uncomfortable with that. It's not intentional, for sure. But I thought, you know what? We can serve all the kids like we do the Abbott kids. And in fact, I would argue, the kids who have needs that are even more comprehensive and complex deserve it at this point, deserve to be moved to priority. So I had a conversation with a teacher at the time who's no longer in the district a couple of years ago about the same thing. Because, you know, people are talking about it, like, right? It's a great program. We have this program, we have all these programs, and everybody's trying to think, like, what can we do? What can we do? And he sat across the table from me, and I remember this moment, because he sat across the table from me and he said, well, I don't think... I said, what? You don't think that this could be for everybody? He said, I don't think Abbott is for everybody. I don't think all kids can do Abbott. And I was like, mm-mm. Baloney, baloney. And I leaned forward and I said, you can tell me that you don't think my Math Warriors boys can do Abbott? That is baloney. And I am not like the lawyers talking about. I don't have any, there's no calm. Because it's like the Grinch on that day. You know, the Grinch's heart grew three sizes or whatever. The fire in me already for kids because of the needs assessment, thank you Dale, I am not going to let this go now. The fire has exploded now because of that comment. Like, that has burned into my memory. I was like on a mission. That is it. That is it. You don't think they can do Abbott? You don't think these kids can do this? Oh, yeah? Yeah, they can. We're going to show you how. So bam, we got Team Up. Okay, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of craziness. We got Harley in there. We got an old student in there who told his story and he said, I wish I could have had something like that. Yeah, it was a lot of time, it was a little bit of money, but the Hops and Optimists threw in a big chunk of that. And that's another piece of it that's so exciting. Michael Murray is calling me up two summers ago and he's like, Kocke, let's go. Like, we couldn't expand Math Warriors at the time. And he's like on, he's like, let's go, let's serve more kids. What are you going to do? What are we doing? And I'm like, okay, am I right already? I'll do it, you know, I'm on it. So I had to kind of, we had to just keep finding that way and finding that way. This is a way. This is a way. It's exciting. And if we're not done, I mean, these kids aren't ready. They're not going to be ready for eighth grade yet. But the amount of growth that they've shown in six months is something. It's something. There's potential here. All of these kids need an opportunity like this. The other 22 elementary schools with their sixth-grade teachers who are like literally typing, can you also consider this kid? Wait, can you move this kid up because of this and that? I mean, our sixth-grade teachers know, our elementary teachers know, and kindergarten, they will tell you, look at the naughty. You know, they're like, yeah, we got you. We have your lips. But they know. We know who they are. We can do something more for not a whole bunch of additional anything else. And so Monty is going to close us out. He's going to bring it to a close. There's not going to be confetti or anything. But we do have some ideas, and we have some recommendations, of course. And then he's going to invite you to our end-of-the-year dinner.
You sure you're done?
I'm done. I only got one chance, so yeah.
Different slide.
Well, and Monty's side, at the time we made this slide and had to turn it in, we were, this was dependent on a couple of different things. So we have nothing up there, just recommendations. But it's all on him. So he's been working on his little part.
Thank you, Kristi. You can see the kind of passion Kristi has for kids. We titled this presentation, The Good, the Bad, and the Ugly. You've seen the good and the bad, so you know what I represent. The success of the pilot has already been presented. You would have never had this level of success without the passionate efforts of Kristi Kotke, Kathy Grant, and OJ Gulli at Evergreen. After spending the last two months in the classroom, I can testify how important Team Up is to these students. You have seen the good news. The greens were the good news. But there's still struggle. There's still struggle. The bad news is that we can't do this again. And the cohort will go on to the eighth grade, and sixth graders will come in Evergreen to seventh grade. And we'll not get that kind of support without purposefully funding. By supporting funding for a program like this, the board capitalizes on the supporting funds that the HOPS, the Hillsborough Schools Foundation, and the Optimist Club might be willing to commit should this program continue to develop. Ms. Grant, Ms. Kotke have more than extended themselves to see if this would work. Most of this work has been done within the school system budget and existing staff. Intermittent paid district hours by Mrs. Kotke and volunteer hours by Mrs. Grant. Ms. Kotke, the Hillsborough HOPS, especially Mike and Lauren McMurray, and their volunteer employees, volunteer employee hours, and the Hillsborough Optimist Club. To make this sustainable next year for identified eighth graders and new seventh graders, it would cost an estimated $50,000 to provide a halftime TOSA or instructional coach to support the teachers and students involved. We have a meeting on Friday, and I was told that we're being cut $8 million in the district. Well, you don't go to administrators and ask them for $50,000, and they're having to cut $8 million. I've been there. So I've been told after our elected officials five months ago told us education is a priority. They're coming back to us and telling us that we've got to cut $8 million. This type of new program, despite administrative results, has little chance of being funded when the administration is looking to cut $8 million. We ask that the board add back that equivalent of a halftime TOSA or instructional coach to the preliminary budget, which once you receive it. We did this back in 2015 with $250,000 added back by a board member. The funds stem coaches in all our schools, so it can be done. These students are looking to you to provide funding to make them successful. Long-term, as our educators identify additional programs for these students that struggle, the board needs to pursue a local-level levy option to fund these programs and not continue to rely on the state and their unfulfilled promises. These students need a board champion. Who will be that board champion?
Thank you very much, Casey and Monty and team, for all of your efforts and your work and sharing that information. We appreciate it very much. And I think Monty was definitely the right person to make that ask because we know that he understands. And so we heard you. Thank you very much. Okay.
Can I just add one thing?
Sure.
I'm going to look at the camera. So Kristi mentioned breaking rules and sneaking into Glencoe. That doesn't occur. There is some creative problem-solving. And no one's sneaking into the schools anymore. So just...
We knew what you meant. For the folks at home.
All right. Let's move right along to the financial report with Michelle. Michelle, do you have any highlights for us? Or are you just prepared for questions?
I am prepared to answer any questions you may have. I would like to know if it's okay, we have some interns in the business office right now, and I was hoping it's okay that they would introduce themselves to you. Okay, can you stand up and make your remain unusual?
Hi, I'm Abby. I'm a senior at Glencoe High School.
I'm Lincoln King. I'm also a senior at Glencoe High School.
I'm a senior, I'm also a senior at Glencoe High School.
They're all time.
And I'd like to address any questions you have.
Wonderful. Any questions for Michelle about the financial report? I don't see any. Okay. Let's move right along then to information. These are administrative regulation updates, which the board does not have to approve. They are in here for our information. Mike, Casey, Travis, are there any highlights? Or are you just there if we have questions?
Just questions.
Questions, okay. Any questions about any of these administrative regulation updates? Kim?
Just if we have questions, since we don't approve them, and they're not on first reading, if we have questions, we can just send them to you.
Yep.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'm having technical issues, which is going to be a problem here at the moment. But it's not a problem yet. That brings us...
I can't load the board back in. I can't either.
Oh, great. It's not just me. I had it in my computer.
I have one paper copy, so if you can...
Maybe you can rely on that. Okay, oh, I have one.
I thought it was operating error. I thought so, too.
Oh, fantastic. But first, we are at our consent agenda.
That just means Erica has to make other mentions.
Yes. But first, somebody else can before we get there. We're at the consent agenda, so I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Move to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Second.
It's been moved by Kim and seconded by Jackie that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? All right, I don't see any. So it's been moved by Kim and seconded by Jackie that we approve the consent agenda as printed. If you would like to approve the consent agenda as printed, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. All right, the consent agenda is approved. Fantastic. That brings us to item H. If you're...
If you try pulling it up on a website that's opposed to a form book, you might have better luck. Maybe just give that a try.
And it's working for me now, too.
Oh, it is, okay. Well, we're not using our hard-earned earnings, so we're going to... So this works for me. All right, we are at item H, our action items for the evening. And very exciting to be at item H1, Accept Gifts and Donations, which we have put back on the action agenda. Michelle, will you give us some highlights of this?
I would like to use all district money that they accept, pick the donations for $5,000 or more. The district does receive donations less than that. And so that's essential to be used for acceptance of the board goal. We have a donation of the biological safety cabinet from Phil Robertson to Phil O'High. We have a donation of $9,244.76 from Patterson Elementary School or Chromeblood specifically. We have a donation of $5,000 from St. John's for the Fire Department to Hillsborough School District or Hillsborough Health and Food Program. Very excited to see this pulled out to be separate from the rest of the consent agenda.
Great idea, Martin. Okay, so I am looking for a motion to approve the gifts and donations.
I move that we approve the gifts and donations. I move that the board of directors accept the donations listed in the board meeting packet.
Okay, it has been moved by Martin and seconded by Jackie that board of directors accept the donations listed in the board meeting packet. Is there any discussion? My discussion, since nobody else has a nominee, is that I am so excited that this is taken out of the consent agenda. I think this is a lovely thing for us to celebrate. And we appreciate so much the assistance of all people in the community and organizations that help everything operate as smoothly as they can. We certainly could not do it without the donations that are received. So we are ecstatic. I'm ecstatic to approve these. All right, so it has been moved by Martin and seconded by Jackie that we accept the donations listed in the board meeting packet. If you would like to accept those donations, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Fantastic. What kind of monster are you going to know? All right, that brings us to item H2, Approve Contract for Audit Services. Michelle?
So according to our policy, it was time for us to review proposals from independent auditors. So we went through that process, a team of five members representing the business office. We released our AP, and we received three proposals back. And all of those were really great. We scored the proposals. We did interviews with each of the firms as well and scored the votes as a team. And I'm happy to share with you that at the top of our list was Grove Miller and Swank, they are current audit providers. And we would like to recommend that we give you services with them.
Fantastic. Okay, so I am looking for a motion to approve the contract for audit services.
I move that the board of directors approve the 36-month contract between Grove, Miller, and Swank PC and the Hillsborough School District to provide audit services as determined in the request for proposal and in compliance with district policy.
Okay. It's been moved by Erica and seconded by Yedira that we approve this contract. Is there any discussion? Martin?
Thank you. I'd just say, Michelle, as somebody who actually loved serving on the audit committee with you, that this firm, Grove, Miller, and Swank, has done a fantastic job. And I'm very pleased to see that there were three firms interested in doing more with this. But I'm very pleased that they're going to continue in that capacity because I think they kind of have to.
Fantastic. Okay, it has been moved by Erica and seconded by Yedira that the board of directors approve the 36-month contract between Grove, Miller, and Swank PC and the Hillsborough School District to provide audit services as determined in the request for proposal and in compliance with district policy. If you would like to approve that contract, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Wonderful, thank you. That brings us to item three, award contract for construction of satellite transportation maintenance facility. Adam and/or Casey?
I can talk about them. The next three items on the agenda are two award contracts for some design build projects. These are different from the CMGC projects that we awarded for the Buss. These are what they consider a hard bid. And we are ready tonight to award the bids for a transportation maintenance facility, the work at Lennox Elementary School, including the parentless drop-off, and the work at Western Elementary School. So I'm happy to agree with Western Elementary School.
Thank you. All right, we will potentially ask questions as we come. But for now, I would like to hear a motion about the contract for a satellite transportation maintenance facility.
I am going to set the board of directors award the contract for the construction of a satellite transportation maintenance facility to Robinson Construction in the amount of $13,691,000. Second?
Okay, it's been moved by Kim and seconded by Jackie that we award this contract. Is there any discussion or questions? Are there any questions or is there any discussion?
Just more woo-hoo's.
Excited to get the decent mechanic thing to that.
So just as background, I guess, for folks who might be in the audience or watching at home, this is a big deal for us. This is really exciting. We currently have one location for transportation for our buses for a district that serves over 20,000 students and is a very significant geographic area. So to have a satellite facility or a second facility so that our buses have a smaller distance to travel really allows us to increase the quality of service and support to our families and our communities. So we're really excited about this. And thank you to the people who wrote yes on our bond, which is the only reason that we're allowed to use this. And P.S., bond dollars, we're not allowed to use for operations like the wonderful program that we maybe heard about earlier, just so nobody gets confused while we're spending so much money. Okay, Martin?
Hi, Adam. I'm going to put you on the spot. I believe Robinson's a local firm. And I believe they've also built one of our schools in the past, haven't they?
We've worked with Robinson on several projects in the past, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's good to have you back.
Fantastic. Okay, so it's been moved by Kim and seconded by Jackie that the board of directors award the contract for the construction of a satellite transportation maintenance facility to Robinson Construction in the amount of $13,691,000. If you would like to award that contract, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. All right, excellent. Thank you very much. That brings us to item number four, award contract for Lennox Elementary School improvements. I'm ready to hear a motion about that.
I move that the board of directors award I move that the board of directors award the contract for Lennox Elementary School improvements to ParTech Construction in the amount of $1,604,300.
Second. It's been moved by Jackie and seconded by Erica that we award this contract. Is there any discussion or are there any questions? What? That was right, right?
I thought it was Kim that seconded it.
They both moved by Erica.
Oh, okay.
Oh, right, okay, I just heard. Any discussion or questions? Mark?
I noticed the HVAC is going to be separate. How long will they have to wait for air conditioning up for this?
It'll happen this year. It's just, it's going to come out as.
Separate contract.
Separate thing.
Thanks.
Fantastic. Okay, it has been moved by Jackie and seconded by Erica that the board of directors award the contract for Lennox Elementary School improvements to ParTech Construction in the amount of $1,604,300. If you would like to award that contract, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Fantastic. All right, that brings us down to item number five, contract for West Union Elementary School improvements. I am ready to hear a motion for that.
I move that the board of directors award the contract for West Union Elementary School improvements to ParTech Construction in the amount of $2,946,100.
Second. It has been moved by Yedira and seconded by Jackie that we award this contract. Is there any discussion or are there any questions? Okay, it has been moved by Yedira and seconded by Jackie that the board of directors award the contract for West Union Elementary School improvements to ParTech Construction in the amount of $2,946,100. If you would like to award that contract, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Excellent. All right, we are now at item number six, approve the dedication of deed and right-of-way dedication between Washington County and Hillsborough School District for the Latakers Elementary School, Johnson Street, Cornelius Pass Road Improvement Project. Adam and/or Casey?
Yeah. Again, this dates back to the work that we did last summer on the parentless drop-off at Latakers Elementary School. We were conditioned at that point that we were going to have to provide this right-of-way dedication and utility easement at that time. This is part of the county's improvement to both Johnson Street and Cornelius Pass Road.
Fantastic. All right, ready to hear a motion?
I move that the board of directors approve the dedication deed and right-of-way dedication between Washington County and the Hillsborough School District for the Latakers Elementary School, Southeast Johnson Street, and Southeast Cornelius Pass Road Improvement Project.
Second. Okay, it has been moved by Kim and seconded by Yedira that we approve this. Are there any questions or is there any discussion? All right, so it's been moved by Kim and seconded by Yedira that the board of directors approve the dedication deed and right-of-way dedication between Washington County and Hillsborough School District for Latakers Elementary School, Southeast Johnson Street, and Southeast Cornelius Pass Road Improvement Project. If you would like to approve that, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Okay, all right, our final action item for this evening is item number seven, the resolution. Michelle, do you want to chat with us about that first or?
Yeah, so we are probably nearing the last year of the COVID agreement with Comcast capable for our internet services. And we anticipate that we need an additional year with Comcast in order to wait for our COVID agreement to be completed and to be lit up. And so in order for us to enter into the agreement in alignment with our E-Grade application, which is something that we get a discount on the services for, required, we have a deadline on March 27th, and so action time is required to allow us to go through with this contract from, with Comcast on the 27th if we can't get another cooperative financing agreement for this last.
All right, first, let's do a motion and then we can do the questions for discussion.
I move that the board of directors adopt the resolution suspending specified limitations of policy DJ, district purchasing, and authorizing the chief financial officer of the Hillsborough School District to enter into a contract for network services on behalf of the district.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Mark and seconded by Jackie that we adopt this resolution. There are some questions and/or pieces of discussion. Erica and then Mark.
So I just had a question because there was no option in our current contract to extend. And the other question was, is there other cooperative agreements that we have looked at that maybe we can use or else?
That's what we're in the process of looking at right now.
Will we, just wondering, will we hear back again to make?
Yes, I'll send you kind of closure in a word-up date application.
Okay.
And only sat back there at some point in his general direction. Don was sort of optimistic that we'd be done before this expired, seemed. So did we miss something or no?
My conversations with Don, he foresaw that we'd be close and that Comcast would try to.
Right, they're going to put screws to us, I got you.
For a minute before we were off.
How close are we?
I think Don was what we predicted.
So we actually start the boring into the ground for the dark fiber on Thursday at 10 o'clock at McKinney. Everyone's invited. Come and watch us take hold. So I.
Was that just for McKinney or for the?
No, that kicks off the entire project.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think the odds that it will be completed by the time that a current contract is.
It's in June, isn't it?
I can't do it off.
Yeah, we hoped to have it done by June, though we didn't get started. We were still in conversations over the contract with, I think it was the employee, the contractor for that project, up until, well, not the time Don left. We finally got that contract in place. So we originally hoped to have it done in June, which would allow us to make that switch before the new Comcast, before the Comcast contract expired. That's not going to happen. So this was, this was the option that seemed to be the best for us.
So we maybe need a few months, but Comcast will make us pay for a whole year?
Yeah.
Is that about right?
Yeah, there were different pricing agreements depending on what time, but if you go month by month, it's much more expensive than five months per year, maybe a whole year. So that's the option for the.
And so.
At this price point.
And so the Comcast contract is general fund dollars and if we would have gotten the fiber done, that would have been bond dollars, right?
No, our services would still be paid from general fund. We're still going to have some cost for internet services, even if it's our fiber. We have to, you know, purchase it from a provider, but it'll be significantly less.
And even our partnership with the city, we can have all five or eight schools that are outside the city, right? 10? How many schools are, how many?
Well, we're extending the power to two of those.
Yeah, two of those, right. But that'd be.
We have nine junctions with the city.
Nine.
Nine county schools.
Okay. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you all. All right, it has been moved by Mark and seconded by Jackie that the board of directors adopt the resolution suspending specified limitations of policy DJ, district purchasing, and authorizing the chief financial officer of the Hillsborough School District to enter into a contract for network services on behalf of the district. If you would like to approve that resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. All right, wonderful, thank you all very much. That brings us to the end portion of our agenda and we are now prepared to welcome up HEA and HCU representatives to share with us. Welcome, come on down.
So I just wanted to talk a little bit about outside appreciation week. That was last week. I just really wanted to thank all the building principals who put together some sort of appreciation for their staff. Work hard, become early, stay late. You know, we really have felt the squeeze of the budget reduction mainly because we start when, a lot of our staff start when students arrive, we end when students leave. And we understand that that's, you know, reality of the situation. We need to make sure we focus on the education of our students. And I just wanted, you know, just to stand up here and say thank you to everyone who did something for our classified folks because I know not every building did. Some of them are fixing them in with, are delaying, have them with teachers and, you know, to be fair, we're all unhappy families. So thank you for thanking us, I guess is what I wanted to say. So have a good night.
Hi, Chilulay, Hillsborough Education Association president. And I am really excited about tomorrow. I think, thank you Danny for sharing our event for tomorrow. Wednesday, we're wearing red, basically teachers are wearing red every Wednesday from here on out, just sending a message that, you know, it's really important that we find the funding that we need for the kids. You know, the cheerleader in me wants to go, this is okay, we're going to keep going, we're going to keep doing it, just like I was here last month. And so, you know, I am not ready to give up yet. I am, you know, the co-chair budget was tough. It was tough to see. And I can't imagine any of our teachers right now having to do more, having an extra one or two students in their classroom to do more because, you know, many of them are at their breaking point. I hear from more this year than I did last year about, you know, July, I just don't know if I can make it. I don't know if I can make it to the end of the year. And it breaks my heart, but, you know, I really believe that there's power in numbers and I believe that we continue to, if we can continue to send a message to Salem and we're visible and we're out there and, you know, and make it positive and have our voices heard, like tomorrow over the bridges, we'll be there from 4 to 6. We have, educators have additional plans for next month and the month after. Tomorrow's going to be really awesome because it's going to be pre-down the I-4 from 4 to 6 tomorrow. So I should hope we make the news and then 26 as well. But I'm just really pleading with you guys, so take the time to reach out to your legislators, email, call, pick up the phone, because it's all hands-on debt right now. And I wanted to say that we took some books over to the Tewali Hospital on Saturday, the second of all of our little new babies that arrived on Dr. Seuss's weekend birthday. That's exciting for us. We will be busy with three of you, I believe, or two of you here and one other school board candidate. They'll be interviewing on the 18th, we're excited about that. And HC is going to be joining us later. And I just want to say thank you again for advocating for this for the students and the teachers.
Thank you all so much. That brings us to our discussion time and we start with student representatives' time. But before I pass the mic over to Samantha, I wanted to let everyone know I'm going to be passing down the two funding resolutions that we passed in January. And on the back, there's a line for the elected board members to sign. And Mike Scott will sign as well and we're going to be sending these to Washington County legislators in Salem. And so please sign as we pass them down. Samantha, go for it.
I'll pass.
No! No pressure. This is the whole habit of, I'm just saying. No pressure, so it's fine. All right, go ahead, Jessica.
I don't really have that much either. I guess the most recent update is that a couple articles came out over these, the past two days of this week. That included me. So that was a really cool opportunity I was given to always be a thank you guys for the Hillsborough School Board, so thank you again for that. The whole video series I've been working with on OSBA and Blue Chalk comes out the first week of April and it's going to be releasing throughout that, the whole month. So that's really exciting. For Century Bridges and our annual Jackfest is just around the corner, just as a notch that we want you guys there. Yeah, it's the Friday after spring break for the Boys' Assembly, which is a really powerful assembly that we do. And it's kind of where it's giving the students an opportunity to share any personal story that they want. And it's a really emotional but heartwarming time.
Oh, me? No. No, I'm sorry. I was watching Aaron's do my pen, but. No, it's all going to be. And I have a gray pen, so it's all going to be in different colors. It's fine. If your pen's not black, I'll share.
I don't have a black pen.
Okay, we're going to send it.
I'm kidding, Mark does.
All right, now, that brings us to superintendent's time, but first, Mike is going to invite Beth to speak with us about transfers.
Yes, so you may have noticed or been pleased with the fact that we didn't have to go through our typical enrollment process this past winter because that has entered its sunset phase. We were kind of waiting to see what would happen with House Bill 2773 that was introduced by Representative Cedric Hatton and actually was co-sponsored by several sitting legislators that would have sought to extend the sunset on open enrollment through this next biennium. But that seems to have stalled out and at first was referred to the House Committee on Education and then was immediately referred to the Student Success Committee. And it doesn't have any hearings scheduled and my insiders tell me that they don't think that any action's going to be taken on that. So given that, we now need to make the decision as to whether or not we are going to participate in the only remaining inter-district transfer process that is left, which is House Bill 2747. So we will be working with our principals and the staff to come up with a proposal for you that we will share with you in a board update, probably in two weeks, two to three weeks, and then we'll have you vote on it along with your other action item at the April 9 work session so that we can get those announced. Thank you.
The only other thing I would add is that we've been engaged in the budget planning process. We have a budget meeting coming up in early April and unfortunately, we're not going to be able to wait until the legislature makes their decision regarding funding for us to do our budgeting process. I think everyone is aware, but we are currently building our budget based on the assumption that the governor's budget is going to be the budget. There's hopefully going to be a plus to that as well, but that is our starting point and that was our significant cut for us. We will be putting together some packages for the budget committee and the board to take a look at and I'll be sharing that information with you in upcoming board updates. And we've also seen an increase in some costs for services that we typically purchase moving forward, so just know that that number has creeped up a tiny bit and I will be giving that information in the board update.
Thank you.
Lisa, can I ask a question, Mike?
Sure.
Mike, your, the governor's reinvestment proposal, that's the 84972?
Correct.
Okay. And that's where we're budgeting now?
That's where we're building the budget.
8497?
Yeah.
Why not at the co-chairs level?
So the information that we received from the folks that work in Salem on a permanent basis, they believe that we are going to get to the governor's budget in some manner. We will have contingency plans that allow us to swing either way, but we didn't want to, we didn't want to build a budget that we want to build the most likely scenario and we believe that is the governor's.
I think we need to keep the co-chairs feet to the fire, which means being honest about what their budget means.
Sure.
And so for the public to stay engaged in the work means to understand what the co-chairs. I'm afraid that that people will fill a hole, right? If there's an assumption we'll get to governors and should we not get to the governors and we have a person that's hired and what actually is real, then we are in July in a mess. While I know it's extra work to have more than one version, I just think we need to be realistic about what does 87 need and so.
You know, that is, it's not that much more additional work. At this point, we, there's going to be a number of reductions that are going to be in draft form and the additional room would come from dates or class size issues. So I don't think it would be that difficult to do that. Do know that if the governor's budget, that's a significant cut for us.
Right, no, I know and I just think the co-chairs is even more.
Yeah, happy to do that.
Thank you.
All right, board of directors, Jackie?
I'm going. I don't have anything. I want to take all your time.
I know. Okay. All right, Mark?
Okay, so it's been busy and continues to be busy. Went to Lennox Elementary School parent club meeting and Glenpool High School robotics. The Lennox Elementary was for advocacy and the Glenpool robotics was just to have a great time and it was pretty epic, of course. And shout out to our friends at the Opera Club who were there serving dinner and it was so well organized. I think Shannon was the mom who put it on and she did a great job and it was just really very uplifting experience. If you ever get an invite to Glenpool High School robotics, don't miss it, it's a lot of fun. I also did something else that was super cool. I went to the first of three Miller Big Picture open houses, shout out to Joe out there, which is just really, really awesome. In fact, Joe and Principal Greg and Sarah, his colleague, but really the star of the show was the student and the mom who really put on the open house. It was a packed house, a lot of interest and if you invest in an hour, I invite all my colleagues or anybody to come out and attend, there's two more open houses, one on the 4th of April and one on the 8th of April. They start at 5:30 in the evening there at Miller Big Picture. And if you invest that one hour, you really figure it out. It's such a unique program, but you see it from all angles, through the window of a student, through the window of the administration, through the window of the superstar staff who make it all happen. It's just really fun. I'm zooming, I'm really upset. Way to go at Miller Big Picture. And I think we have a superstar student in the house too that might even be more excited about it than me. Okay, so then, we got a lot of stuff coming up and I won't talk about that, but I do want to give a plug for one of them, that's the Crystal Apple Award Dinner. It's on our calendar, that's just such an awesome event. I hope many people are looking forward to attending that. A note for everybody, the Cornelius Police Department is actually Washington County Sheriff's Office under contract to the City of Cornelius and they rebrand as City Police, but they're actually some of my colleagues from Washington County. But my point is the chief of police has changed. It's no longer Albrook Kay, it's now a gentleman by the name of John Bennett. So there's a new chief of police in Cornelius and I hope, Mike, that as we continue our discussion with security and we reach out to all the law enforcement agencies, we reach out to him and begin him aware of all the things that HSD is doing to protect our kids, I think of John Bennett as the new chief of police. And I think, I just want to mention my board colleagues. Are we changing mentors? Do we have a changing of the responsibilities? I think, I think I'm in the best now, so I'm mentoring away. Tell me what I'm supposed to do and I'll take the baton and.
It's probably. Give me one second, I have your answer. It's March to May. Martin goes to Samantha and Erica comes to me.
Okay.
So I guess that does happen.
So yes.
Yes.
Really, what's happening?
Okay, that's it. Thank you, Mark.
So our minds longer, we could give it any time, we didn't. Partially because I just came back from, Eric and I were down at the Legislative Policy Committee. First, before I get into legislative stuff, we do have one more parent group presentation that I add to the calendar this week. It's at Newbury, Thursday, 9/6, if anybody would like to join me. So it's perfect. They participated at the one at Liberty and liked it so much, in fact, the information was important enough that they wanted us to come back and they're having a special event at their school.
6 p.m. Thursday?
6 p.m. on Thursday. Beth, you had a comment about the bill that went to joint committee.
Sorry. One of the people we saw this weekend was Representative Dougherty from the House Education Committee. Every single education bill has to go through the Joint Committee on Student Success. So it used to be, they've added this extra layer and I think there's a backlog there, but, so don't be alarmed for things that might get stuck there because there's already a lot down there, which was interesting because that hasn't happened before. So legislative stuff is so crazy interesting. First, I want to say this poster which many of us saw when we went to Salem, and Michelle, you may already be up to speed on this, but what we heard over the weekend is, so this shows you currently the governor's proposals and like what it really takes, the steps to get to KIM. But what's really important are these four buckets if there's additional revenue, right? So one of the things we heard was co-chairs budget is kind of the main budget and additional revenue all comes with strings, these four buckets. If there's additional revenue, right? So one of the things we heard was co-chairs budget is kind of the main budget and additional revenue all comes with strings, these four buckets. These four buckets are the strings, and they all come with lots of accountability, um, to which I say, bring it on. Right? Those four buckets, because I know Monty's not here anymore, small class sizes, well-rounded education, student health and safety, and more learning time. There is a lot of things you can really do in those four buckets. I will nod to, arts integration serves in at least two of those four buckets, and we have Isaac Island. But what they're creating that you should be receiving soon is a digital version of this, so that districts can play with this and customize it and digitize it, so that these numbers can change, and then you can decide as a district exactly how much you would put in each bucket and what that would buy, and then we have to be accountable. They said it won't be exactly like an achievement compact, but it's sound a lot like an achievement compact, where you stake exactly how you'd spend those dollars, what you anticipate the results are going to be, and that should you not reach those results in three to five years, be prepared that someone from the Student Success Committee might come in and side by side with you to help you figure out what you need to tweak. Again, that's awesome, it's very manageable. The co-chair's budget, for those who get confused, because the co-chairs talk about the current service funding level, which is different than what OSBA says, so you get asked this question, and you will get asked it, it is three things. One, they based it on last biennium, and last biennium instead of splitting our money 49% in the first year and 51% in the second year, which is what they've traditionally done to help with the increasing cost, they split it 50/50. That alone is a $67 million difference in current service level by those percentage points. They base it on the average cost of purse for all districts, and don't look individually at districts and how they've bonded their responsibilities, if they have any side accounts or any of that, and none of your bonded debt is calculated into that current service level. And the third one is, um, God, I love this one, they kept the insurance growth at 3.4% and told OEB they had to keep it at that. Pretty certain that none of us in the public or private sector had a cap of 3.4%. So I just think it's really important, because when you go out and you're talking to people, they're going to be confused about how come the co-chairs are saying it's this number and you're saying this other, this other number, because that just mean you can't, you don't know how to spend your money properly, you're not managing it right? No, they're using really poor calculations that aren't fair, and that's crazy. The next piece of the sort of overall, um, work that will happen starting now until probably through May is asking board members to go out and talk to business partners. So sharing, um, we asked at the meeting for OSBA to give us talking points, rather than each district trying to create their own PowerPoint and their own talking points, could we please get something that would serve all 197 of us that have consistent messaging? Um, and they would like us to share that with chambers, rotaries, anybody we can get in front of. A small group of businesses have come to the table and are part of one of the coalitions. I will say that a lot of them in our neighborhood have not come to the table yet, with the exception of Nike is one of, probably the only really large corporations who are coming to the table to talk about it. So I'm looking forward to that, so once we have that, we can start our whole spring thing. Everyone at the meeting was in agreement that this will happen on the last day, that this will be a June 30th sort of thing, that it will take that long. I gave Beth a poster that I hope we can post. It's a picture of the 90 people who control this decision, and I really, so anytime anyone comes here and asks us for more money, or as we start to start seeing people, you will see them in March and April and May begging you not to cut their program, and telling you all the things they love and why they're valuable, those 90 people are in charge of that decision. And so I would love to continually remind people, those are the 90 people we need to move. You don't have to move the seven of us, we all are in agreement. Those 90 people need to get the job done, and so we need to highlight them, so everyone knows which ones are in our district. Let's do that. I think that's all I want to say.
Gotta follow that. One of the cool things we did since last meeting was have the student conversation in Miller. I love those, glad that we're still doing those, I'm guessing Lisa's going to hit on it, so we'll cover too much, but it's dealer thunder. I know you hate it when we do that. Martin and I participated in Representative Solomon's listening session on Saturday, and it's, it's interesting that you bring up the co-chair's budget, and, uh, I believe one of the bills she is championing or maybe sponsoring. The budget, co-chair's budget used to involve COSA and representatives from people in schools. So one of the reasons I think why it's, what we consider to be inaccurate, is that those people are not at the table, and there's several, several groups that are no longer at the table. Representative Solomon is proposing a piece of legislation that says that when the co-chairs are creating that budget, they have to bring those people back to the table. So, remember when it was they stopped doing it, 10 years ago, eight years ago? Something like that?
Kid Soper 2.0.
Uh, okay. So, that's right, Kid Soper 2.0, so, maybe eight, 10 years. So, um, so that's something that we could maybe find opportunities to specify. Speaking of which, we were, Lisa and I were lucky enough to, well, we spoke, but I think we were pretty much just Jessica's traveling person.
Hey, you're so special, too.
Entourage, we're Jessica's on, we did speak, but the whole show was about Jessica, so. And I was fortunate enough to be in the background of one picture of Jessica we got with. That was pretty cool.
Those two.
I was in two? The background on two. She was better. So that was a lot of fun, and hopefully we will, I've reached out to Lori at OSBA and told her that we are at the ready for anytime that comes up again, and she needs help, we're willing to head on down there and do it.
More photo opportunities.
That?
More photo opportunities.
That's it.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Um, I had the opportunity to go to W. Henry this afternoon, which was the school that I attended as a kid, all but it's late. It's amazing how much smaller the building feels. Have not been back, and so I signed in, and they told me which classroom, and she's like, oh, do you know where it is? Have you met her before? And I'm like, not in a really long time. So, um, and my purpose for going there was to talk to the leadership group that Adelante Mujeres has there, so, um, it was great to talk to those women, and one of their initiatives is to, um, approach their legislatures about our current, uh, school budget. I'm sorry. And so one of the questions was, you know, how do we talk to these important people? You know, and I actually, like, we role-played, because they felt, um, really intimidated with, um, having to approach somebody and telling them their story. And so my advice to them was, um, was that, you know, our representatives are here to, basically be our voice in Salem. Like, you have a right to let them know what is important to you, and the more people that we can get to do that, um, will make, you know, this a possibility. So, um, they are going to write letters and try and call our legislatures, so, um, that was a really good experience, and I'm, you know, happy that I, I went there, but, yeah. Henry needs a makeover.
Yes.
So I won't touch on anything that Kim already said, but it was awesome, um, to be there. Um, the other thing I was thinking though about your suggestion is that the, um, the Hillsborough Chamber of Commerce actually has on their website, like, who their representatives are, and I was wondering if that's something that we can do? Like, who are the representatives that are, that make up our district, which would be awesome, too. Like you said, I like, in our homepage. Um, the other thing I was gonna mention is that I actually went to a civic forum about the impact of incarceration and listened to community members that had bonded their process and then trying to integrate back into the folds of our community, and it was really powerful to hear testimony from, especially for women that were coming back, and how our differences also to just be involved in your kids' lives and be part of that. And so it's just, just something to put in the back of your mind, that these are other community members and people in our district, and, um, I don't know yet, like, what to do, but I gave my information to just kind of keep in contact and learn more about that, and what does that mean for us? Um, what can we do, or what do they need from us to be able to integrate as well? And the other thing that I went to do was do a presentation at Virginia Garcia's RISE Program, and so this program teaches their employees, and non-profit employees, civic engagement, and what does that mean? And so just having people that are involved in different areas of civic engagements, I went and did a presentation and talked about serving on the board and what that's like, and that was really, that was really rewarding for me to do, and just to hear people that are interested, because that's really what we wanted, to have a pipeline of leaders that come, you know, after we're gone, because I'm not going to have best ideas forever. So, um, I did that, and then the other thing was the Washington County Civic Leaders Celebration. I also presented there, and, um, that is a really good partnership with Adelante Mujeres as well, and it teaches, it teaches, especially communities of color, on how to, um, get involved civically, and again, what does it mean to be on a board or a committee, and, and it goes to a lot of role-playing and presenting. I think that's part of the hurdle, is just being aware of how the system works in order to be able to participate. So, um, just FYI, there's like a lot of superstars in my group that I'm hoping will be part of our different committees and boards.
I can say? All right, thank you. Okay, um, let's see. Uh, there has been a lot going on, like everyone has said, so, um, I'll try not to, uh, repeat all the things that people said. I'll do my best. Uh, like Mark said, we did go to Miller Ed last week, which was great, it was on Wednesday, and we got to talk to a group of mostly freshmen, sophomores about their experience so far with the picture, and learn about why they chose Miller as opposed to their, um, their traditional high school, and, uh, what they wish was maybe different about Miller, and what they, um, what they liked a lot. Mostly it was very positive feedback, so that was really, um, an interesting conversation for us, and, um, it was different than our experience has been at Miller in the past, because these were kids who were involved in Big Picture, and so they were really excited about this more flexible, um, the kind of program that they had a lot more control over, and so, um, it's always positive feedback more at Miller, but it was very different. So that was, that was great, it was really neat. Let's see, uh, a couple of weeks ago, uh, Joe mentioned there was Dr. Seuss's, uh, the whole, the Dr. Seuss thing, uh, and I got to go and read, um, to a few classes, at which case I got to reach to kindergarten class, uh, and another kindergarten class, and then a second, third split, and so I watched some of my favorite books, Milwaukee in the Pocket, uh, one of the greatest literary works of all time, and, and also the speeches, which is actually just literary work, not just random words that rhyme. But it was a lot of fun, uh, it was so fantastic, and I had a really wonderful time doing that, so I'm really excited to get to have that opportunity. Devin mentioned that it was classified appreciation week, and it absolutely was, and that was, it's great to have weeks to appreciate folks. I think that as a board, we could do more to recognize, um, our wonderful classified folks, and so, um, we've kind of talked about some things that we can maybe do next year kind of offline, and hopefully that we'll do a little bit more, um, moving forward, because I think that, that's a, that's an easy, easy lesson, since we, um, are kind of depressed about our options for big lifts, maybe we should, we should take a little lift if we can. So there's the opportunity to go to Liberty tomorrow, I don't know if anybody went today, um, but I'm going to be here tomorrow morning, and I'm really excited, I hope to see you all there, get to learn about science stuff, yes, science stuff?
Science.
So that's going to be excellent and super fun, um, and we're going to meet in the front so that people don't get lost, right? Great, excellent, okay. Uh, and then like Mark said, Jessica, Mark and I did go down to Salem last week, we testified, um, before the Education Budget Subcommittee, um, about the dismal, uh, state school fund proposal. Um, we were more like Jessica's entourage, um, but we also spoke, uh, and, um, we shared with them the realities of our district, which sounds a little bit different and looks a little bit different than some of the other school districts in the state. And, of course, they are all, um, nodding their heads and smiling and seem very sympathetic, so that was great. So we're, we're hopeful that there will be some movement, we're, we're holding out hope, like Joe said, that's, that's where we're at right now, and we're, we're continuing to put pressure on them. We've been up Salem, some of us, three times so far to meet with folks, and after we testified, we went around and, um, and dropped some information off at those Budget Committee members and said hi to folks in the hallway. Uh, we will be back again, we're going to send our funding resolutions to folks in Salem. We are, um, we're, we're doing, um, what we can, and we, we're, we're there with you, and, uh, and we're really, we're trying, so, um, but we all have to keep trying, we all have to send them emails and calls and go, we have to not let up and, um, until they leave Salem, and we can't talk to them anymore unless we, no, I won't go. Okay. I was going to say, if we knew where they live, we could like go like drop them information at their houses, but I didn't want to be creepy, so, I know, but let's not do that. That, uh, and then before our next meeting, I will go and then come back to the National School Awards Association Conference in Philadelphia. So that's at the end of this month, which is really exciting, and I'm looking forward to that. Uh, it's always really exciting because we get to learn a lot, it's also sometimes depressing because we get to learn a lot about how other states experience education, uh, and it's different than what we do in Oregon. So I'm already kind of like in this downward spiral about that, and I'm sure that's just going to feed into it when I'm there, um, but I, I hope to come back with a lot of wonderful ideas, uh, that are free. So, that'd be great. Um, and then, uh, it is, uh, campaign time, so Deere and I were just talking before we started about how busy we are with that, uh, in addition to all the work that we do as board members, and so, uh, we're really excited, um, for the campaign to, to go and then be done in 72 days, and we, we can't wait for that to happen. So, we are going to the parade, um, you're invited to watch us, um, if you want, but we have limited space for walkers, so if you have not, if you haven't signed up. But we are going to do candy, we're going to have signs, and so if you like parades, because they're such a fun time, you can come down, um, the streets of Hillsborough, and you can, uh, get some candy and see some people who are wearing really fun parade things. Martin, are you?
Yes, thank you, Lisa. I just...
So one, one benefit I get is I get the last word, and now you're taking it from me.
I will give it back to you. It, we've all talked about the budget and advocacy, and I just wondered that it's worth noting that a very active member of the community, indeed a former board member, encouraged us to consider a local option levy, should it come to that, and, and it was interesting that that was unsolicited comment from the member of the community.
Wonderful. Okay, uh, so keep fighting hard for school funding, come watch a fun parade, and then we will see everyone here at our next meeting, which is on April 9th as our work session, April 30th is our next regular session. Thank you very much. We're doing, good night.